...systems in place that make it easy for folks to recycle.
One other piece in the recycling puzzle is polystyrene. This foam material is not easy to recycle because it's lightweight and has a low scrap value and its cost efficiency.
...
Okay, there are no additional agenda items. The schedule update, I'll go through that. Mention a couple of items. Just a reminder that tomorrow, Tuesday, October 4th at 7:30 in this room is the nominating caucus. Next Monday, October 10th, we're going to have a discussion of State of Maryland Sustainable Communities Application and Priorities, Priority Projects Listing. And I believe that's kind of pro forma that we have to do. It's a combination of the processes, so that's not what it might appear to be at first. Monday, the 17th, we have a first reading ordinance commending the code for administrative regulations. That's the piece that we discussed a little bit when we did the other pieces and Councilmember Schultz had some input and we said we would get back to it and this is that item. And then a continued discussion of city committees which keeps getting bumped. And then Monday, October 24th, we have a number of resolutions including the approval of the Sustainable Community Plan and requesting designation as a sustainable community. Also a reminder that those three meetings, which are October 10th, 7th, and 24th, are essentially the last meetings of this council. There is one date, Monday, November 14th, that is listed as a tentative meeting if this body needs to finish up any business because we're not going to be meeting on the very first because we'll be in Cambridge at the Maryland Municipal League Fall Conference. And then Monday, November 7th is the night before the election and we historically don't meet the night before the election. The clerk needs time to set up the room and I believe this year the preparations for the election include some use of this room. And so if we were meeting the night before, the clerk and the deputy clerk would be here until all hours setting up after we left only to return early in the morning to do the election. So we don't want to do that to them. And let me just mention here that you can probably hear it in my voice, I have a bad cold and if we weren't doing important things this evening, I would probably be home in bed. So I'm going to do my best to make it to the end of the meeting. I have my support items up here with me and I may ask at some point for the mayor pro temp to take over running the meeting while I sit back and don't talk because I may start losing my voice for all I know. So we'll now move to public comment period and that's a chance for anybody to comment on anything that's not on our special session agenda this evening. So anything that's on our work session discussion and anything not on the agenda.
Hello, I'm Roz Grigsby, Executive Director of the Tacoma Business Association. I'm here on behalf of OTBA and the Tacoma Park Street Festival organizer Laura Barclay to say thank you to the city for your support. I saw many of you yesterday. I hope you enjoyed the street festival. I particularly wanted to thank the police and the Department of Public Works. They are, as usual, were just above and beyond the call of duty in helping with the festival. And the rec department was part of it this year, which was wonderful. City clerk helps us. It's very much a community effort and we very much appreciate the city's support and backup on it. So I hope it was a good day for you in spite of the rain and the chill. We had a pretty good crowd. Thank you very much.
Seemed like it was a great festival and more booths than I can remember seeing in quite some years.
Councilmember Schultz was just asking me about that too. A couple of years ago, we actually did an expansion. And this year was only two more booths than last year, but we had the Chalk for Peace activities, kids doing pictures of envisioning peace in the residential block on Carroll. So that sort of stretched it down and we had one more moon bounce type activity than usual. So, you know, always ways to tweak it. Hope you enjoyed the music as well.
Good job.
Thank you.
I just want to suggest that next year you have a moon bounce for adults because it looks like so much fun, but I can't, no one will let me in.
You know, they make the doorways really little. I think that's deliberate. But we have had inquiries about activities for teens as well and I don't know if there's a moon bounce for adults. Would you buy a ticket?
I guess I'm committed.
Maybe water, you know, one of those dunk machines, he might volunteer for that.
Oh yeah, the worst handout at the street festival.
I have sons who are baseball pitchers, so I might not ingratiate myself to council. My kids are the ones dunking council members, but yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Robert Lanza. I live at 7215 Cedar Avenue. I wanted to follow up on something that I had mentioned last week at the previous council meeting about the prospect of the city taking on its own authority for planning and zoning. I'd like to see that at some point, probably for the continuing council next year on the council agenda, just so that people can get an idea of what it would take from a legal standpoint, from a cost standpoint, from a staffing standpoint, for the city to actually establish and implement its own authority. Some of the commentary that I heard last week concerning the difficulties of getting the planners of Rockville to listen to the community input were a little disturbing in terms of what we expect to happen. We have community oriented policing, we ought to have, you know, community oriented zoning and planning, I think. So that could be a subject for the agenda at some future meeting. I think people would be interested in having the discussion. Thank you.
Thanks for your thoughts on that. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to council comments. Councilmember Snipper.
Wow. That's a surprise. I want to say I'm sorry Roz left, but I thought all those people associated with the street festival did a really terrific job. There were a lot of booths in coordinating that and the food and the city did a terrific job with closing streets and traffic control. To me, I was there for quite a long time and despite the gloomy day and weather, there were a lot of people there, a lot of people not from Tacoma Park coming and enjoying our city. It was nice having the farmer's market as well for part of the time because I think that brought people as well and then they enjoyed the street festival. So kudos to all who worked on it. And then another quick comment is I'll miss the October 17th council meeting. I'm going to be on a trip.
Councilmember Robinson.
Following up on Mr. Lanza's suggestion, how would that get on the council agenda? Would it be our discussion away from this dais and then your decision based on our interest or is it something that we could take a straw vote on now?
My sense is I was going to put it on the agenda because it would be good to bring it up so that people understand what would be involved.
Okay, put it on the agenda before this council is finished or the next council?
My sense was the next council.
Next council. So you're making a commitment to put it on the agenda for next council to consider whether or not, to consider the ramifications of having our own zoning?
Yes.
If it was in this council, I'd vote to put it on the agenda to consider it. So if I'm not here, next, I mean, I won't be here for the next council, but
You can come do public comment.
I can certainly do that.
Besides, you might be right in.
I'm glad to, I'm glad to hear that it will be considered by the next council. Two things I went down to the solar decathlon over the weekend, which I found really interesting and wished I lived in one of those small houses that doesn't use any energy. And I was proud of the Terps who were getting like, I think their first place in this solar decathlon. Very exciting.
At the walls.
The other thing is that my family and I have been watching a video called Garrett's Law. It's set, it's an English series, it's set in England in the 1780s. And Garrett is a barrister. Solicitors are the attorneys in those days who get work and barristers actually speak at court. Garrett is a barrister. It is based on real life events and it's based on records from the Old Bailey, which was the court in London. And he was able to bring about really cross-examination of witnesses, which hadn't been done before, and speaking directly to the jury. It's a very inspiring show, but the reason I bring it up is that everybody in court wears wigs and my wife thinks that we all ought to be wearing wigs up here.
Some of us might be.
Some of us shouldn't.
All right, go.
Councilmember Schultz.
I could, I could use a wig. I needed a wig about 40 years ago. And one of the things that the city has been deeply involved in over, I don't know how many years now, is the Tacoma Langley Sector Plan. And as for those of you who've been paying attention, you know that the process has reached a point of fairly high tension between the city and the planning board. And so I just want you to know that what I want to say is that the mayor and myself, because I represent Ward City, which is where the sector plan is situated, have been in close touch, working with our planning, our community development coordinator here in the city to, and talking to various interests to maintain our presence and be very articulate about the city's point of view with, as the county council and the planning board conduct hearings, held meetings on this business. So tomorrow afternoon, I will be present at the Montgomery County Council's meeting on this and I may have the opportunity to speak, I may not, but the point is, is that somebody needs to be there just to simply make people pay attention to what Tacoma Park's needs are, which they well know. And then Thursday afternoon, the planning board is holding a meeting as well with regard to the urban design guideline issue. And I will be attending that one as well. The other thing that I want to comment on is Mr. Lanza's idea. I guess that seems to be something reasonable to think about, given our recent experience with how the planning has progressed with regard to the zoning and design guidelines and sector plan. I would be completely undecided on the matter at this point in time, but I think it is worth, it's something to think about. And the one thing I do think that I'd like to see happen is that there's, in my opinion, inadequate enforcement by the county. That would be the county's Department of Permitting Services with regard to the ordinance that regulates commercial signs. I don't know about how they enforce it in the rest of the county, but I've never been satisfied with how they enforce it in the city of Tacoma Park. In fact, I'm not sure there's much enforcement in the true sense of the word done at all. I think it's sort of like issuing a permit and then they, they don't pay any further attention to it. That's probably not accurate, but that's my sense at this point in time. And I do think it would be a wonderful idea if the city could at least enforce, take the reins of enforcing the county's code with regard to commercial signs. But we can talk about it another time. Thank you.
Councilmember Clay.
Thank you. I had a great time at the, at the street festival this weekend. It did rain a little bit and some people left for a little bit, but then it stopped raining and they came back. I spent a couple of hours staffing the Seasons of Life Birth Center booth. I think I've talked about that for a while, but I'm still on the board of Seasons of Life Birth Center. And we are moving forward with our plans to try to bring a birth center to the city of Tacoma Park. I'm waiting to see what happens with law because there are some ties to that and some options related to that. But it was a good time and my kids had a good time and had some good food and ice cream and listened to the two guys that were doing the rap routine at the gazebo. I don't know if you guys got to see that, but it was really funny. I really enjoyed that. The other thing is that I have an outstanding financial issue that I need help from the rest of the council with.
We can pay for Girl Scout cookies.
Well, you did pay for your Girl Scout cookies. But, you know, Girl Scout cookie time is coming up in a few months. Even though I won't be here, I will bring by boxes of cookies, lemon creams for the city manager, thin mints for the rest of you. I got it covered. No, but some of you may recall, a few years ago, we voted to provide communications funding to the council that included the payment of cell phones. And I had a PDA that I purchased at that time while we were trying to negotiate how the city was going to transfer my telephone number over to the city, which took a lot longer than anybody anticipated. And I was going to be reimbursed for the time period in which I was paying for my cellphone after we all agreed that we would pay for the phones under the communications plan and everyone else's plan was being paid for by the city, except mine was not. And I have never been reimbursed for that money. So I talked to the city manager about it and she said that we would at this point require a vote of the council to get reimbursed. So I'm asking the mayor to put it on the agenda so that we can have a vote of the council and I can get my money back.
Will do.
Thank you.
Will that be the current?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Will that be what?
That'll be the current council.
Yeah.
Does this mean we have to meet on October, November 1st?
I don't think it'll take that long.
We'll see. Councilmember White.
Thank you. I want to encourage, I know the mayor mentioned it already, but I want to encourage people to come to the nominating caucus tomorrow night at 7:30. I'll be here. It's always a fun event. Sometimes there are surprises. I look forward to it. It also does make me a little bit sad that the mayor mentioned we only have a limited number of meetings coming up. I will, there are many aspects of my time in the council I'll miss, including spending time with the six wonderful individuals up here, eight wonderful individuals up here. Also thank Roz and all the volunteers for the wonderful street festival. I thought it was great. I felt like there was something for everybody, from the youngest kids to the oldest Americans and everywhere in between. I do have a question for the city manager, she doesn't have to get back to me about today, but if we could get an update from Washington Gas on the work that's going on in the Penn neighborhood? I don't think there's agitation about it, but they said it would be pretty slow, but it seems to be glacial. I'm wondering if the, if the rain, like the delay related to the public works facility, if there's similar issues with the Washington Gas project. I want to remind people about the October 15th Tacoma Foundation Beer Fest that Katie Lee mentioned from 4A. You could have bought tickets to the street festival if you didn't already. You can still buy them at the door or I think Now and Then and a few other establishments around the city are selling them. And then lastly, I'm glad that the next council will be dealing with the planning suggestion. I think that's a wise thing not to try and smush that into the agenda. It would be one of the items I'd come back for and listen to and make public comment on. I do think it would be very interesting to know what legal authorities we have to do it, what it would cost, and also think about what we would want to do for the city versus what needs to happen at the county level or regionally. One thing about planning, I think Colleen probably knows this best, is just that how important planning is at a larger level than just the city, particularly with transportation issues and other issues like that. And, you know, I think we ought to be careful that just because we don't like something in terms of the way the county is doing it, doesn't necessarily mean that we should take it over. I'm excited to have the discussion, but I think we should be cautious about it as we proceed. Thanks.
And Councilmember Clay, have an additional item?
I forgot to tell everybody, there's a party at my house on October 29th. We're having the annual Halloween party that Saturday night. And so if you're looking for more time to spend with the seven of us together, you could all come to the Halloween party.
It's the 30th?
It's on Saturday night.
Saturday? This coming Saturday?
Saturday night, the 29th of October. You know, just before Halloween. And we'll have a band and I'll probably have another keg of root beer or other such things for folks and probably lots of teenagers and adults. It is also the night of the Boy Scout Pancake Supper. But you can do both things. You can go first to the pancake supper and then come to my house for the Halloween party. It's a good time will be had by all.
It's a great party. What time does it start?
I think it's going to start at 6:00. We get some early birds, come by for a little bit, then have to go home and go to bed. But the fun really starts at about 8:00, 8 to 10.
And I've got a couple of things to mention. First, I wanted to remind people that this Wednesday, October, what's today? So the 5th. This Wednesday, October 5th is the Safe Roots to Schools Day. And I will be walking to school with kids from three different schools, from first with Tacoma Park Middle School, then with Tacoma Park Elementary School, then with Piney Branch Elementary School. So anybody who is, who has any time and wants to do that, that all takes place starting, I believe, at 7 o'clock. I've got the schedule. Everybody's interested can get it to you. There's an opportunity to do all three schools and you can rush from place to place to place. And sometimes the chief is going from the same place to the same place and you can get a ride in a police car, which could be a big thrill. And it's a great opportunity to talk with kids and talk with the importance of, talk about the importance of walking to school.
What was the date again?
October 5th, Wednesday, two days from now, unless you're watching this on a delayed broadcast, in which case it may already have happened.
Should have been there.
Yep.
How was it?
It was excellent. I wanted to just piggyback for a second on Councilmember Schultz's comments on the county council and park and planning discussions about both the CR zones and the design guidelines. I had the privilege to go last Tuesday and listen to the five hour discussion on the CR zone item with an hour and a half break in between since they broke for lunch. It was very interesting to hear their discussion. It was also very interesting to talk to a number of people who were there, who were from Wheaton Planning Area and Kensington and I've also heard from some in Montgomery Village. And they were very happy that we were there, that we took the stand that we did, that we had the resolutions and the letters. They felt like we were the largest entity dealing with park and planning and that we were going to be of great help to them in getting the attention of various county officials and putting a spotlight on the issues that have been concerning to all municipalities. So it was, it was a very good thing to do. I'm glad Councilmember Schultz can go tomorrow since I can't go tomorrow, but we keep tag teaming and we got them covered. And I will be joining Councilmember Schultz at Park and Planning on Thursday for the design guideline discussion. And then I just wanted to point to two things. The first was, if anybody missed it, on Thursday of last week, the governor announced plans to phase out taxpayer spending on bottled water for all state agencies and to support public tap water. And Maryland becomes the sixth state to respond to the urging of grassroots activists to think outside the bottle. And I was, I was gratified that there was mention in the press release that both Frederick and Montgomery Counties as well as the city of Tacoma Park are bottled water free. And there was a nice quote from the governor and there was a nice quote from me. So I was happy to see that. And what we do here does get noticed and does make a difference. And the other thing that I was going And the other thing that I was going to just mention was, I was interested to read in the current new issue of the city newsletter, the October newsletter, a nice article about city staff being involved at COG, and particularly their efforts in the Institute for Regional Excellence. And I thought, hmm, they didn't even mention my name.
Wow.
Since I was there for the founding of this program, and I've been the board chair for all nine years it's been in existence, but bummer sites happen. So I just thought I'd correct the record and say it's not just the staff.
So much for excellence.
And that's all I've got. Does the city manager have any comments?
Just two brief items at your places. This evening is an update from our construction consultant about the Public Works project. We just continue to be plagued by the wet weather. It's really impacted the project in kind of two primary ways. One was the site work that was necessary to get the utilities in. Thankfully, that's now done. But we've also been held up by the rain in terms of doing the final paving and striping, and without that, we can't get the occupancy permit. We're hoping that we'll have some dry weather this week, and we'll be able to finish up those pieces of the project, assuming that happens, or whenever that happens. Some of the public work staff that has been working over in this building will move back over to the administration building. And once they're able to do that, they'll start renovating the maintenance building. As some of you may recall, this was a bid alternate that the council had agreed to exercise that option once we got into the project and had a better sense of some of the funding. Right now, the date we're looking at is probably the middle of November. Once again, we just need to sort of keep watching the weather and hope that things get a little bit sunnier, and we should be able to move on with the project. But I'll keep you updated. We're sort of entering probably about a six to eight week critical stage in the project now. The other one I just wanted to mention, it's kind of tangentially related to the Public Works project. Some of you may recall from the budget discussions this year, we had included $80,000 to do some roof work at Public Works. This was existing roofs that were to be funded out of the equipment replacement reserve. Daryl and I had talked about it, and we did approach Keller, the general contractor for the Public Works facility renovation, about the possibility of maybe they're adding that work on to their scope of work, because they've already done some roof work. Daryl was pleased with that. We had $80,000 in the budget. We got an updated quote today to possibly do this work. It's just under $45,000. So from a financial standpoint, it would make a lot of sense just to piggyback on to the Public Works project to get this roof work done. But just given the magnitude of the change order, I just wanted to bring it to the council's attention and make sure everyone was comfortable with moving in this direction.
What would the roof work involve, or what is its object?
We have some old sections of roof. I believe they're on the mechanics building primarily, where there are some active leaks. So basically, they would actually kind of rip off the old roof, put a new membrane down, and reshingle the building.
Oh, okay.
So it'd be a total roof replacement. I'm seeing some nodding heads, so it looks like everyone's comfortable, so we'll go ahead and proceed with that, executing the change order.
Am I nodding head to swings, just looking for any questions?
Okay. Yeah, they did ask as part of this request to add five days to the project, which is reasonable, given the amount of work involved. So that's it.
So you've got what you need on that.
Yeah. So that's it, unless there's any questions any of the members of the council have.
I don't see any. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just note that we don't have any minutes to adopt this evening, but that the clerk will be supplying this council with a number of minutes to adopt before this council finishes so that we can basically approve the minutes that involve meetings that we've been involved in.
You mean we can meet on the 14th?
It means we might come back in a special session on Christmas Eve.
No.
Or Thanksgiving. Veterans Day. Take your pick. At this point, we'll go into our special session, which is to discuss a resolution placing an advisory referendum on the ballot related to reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. We talked about this last week. We had a straw vote. It was 3 to 3. Councilmember Schultz had had to leave. And maybe I'll turn first and see if Councilmember Wright wants to make any additional comments, and then depending on whether Councilmember Schultz wants to jump into the fray right away or hold back, it's your choice.
I would just say quickly, you know, the language isn't significantly different from last week, other than changing it to make it clearly advisory, based on a guidance from the city attorney. I continue to think that this is a good idea. The resolution doesn't commit us or tie the hands of future councils. It provides flexibility, but it does set a marker in the ground that we have an audit done, and we know where we stand, and we encourage future councils to move forward with reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. You know, I've talked to a lot of people about this issue, both in the council and the community. Some people say they think the language is too strong. Some people say they think the language is too weak and should be, have something very specific in there. And I also realize that referendum can be relatively controversial, as Councilmember Clay and Snipper mentioned last week. They do have a tendency to cause people to make a decision within a vacuum of the other issues that are faced. And generally, I'm not in favor of referendum. I think in this case, because it's not committing us to a specific dollar amount, and really what it's helping to do is encouraging us to set a marker and do the audit, which would actually facilitate and help future discussions that the council might have, I continue to be in favor of it. I hope my council colleagues will vote on this and vote in favor of it, put on the ballot, and let citizens decide to have their opinion heard, and realize that some people may feel that, well, Tacoma Park is a green place. If we put something on the ballot, people will vote for it. But you can't be sure about that, and I think it would be a good opportunity to give people an opportunity to vote for it, as well as to garner a discussion and debate and raise the issue with the public. Thank you.
Councilmember Snipper has his light on. Councilmember Schultz, did you want to make any comments first?
Want me to make it?
Your choice.
All right. I've had a chance to.
I've had a chance to, you know, have another whole week to think about this because of my need to depart a little early from last week's council meeting. My sentiments are that I think that the objective of the proposed advisory thing, a ballot question is, you know, at base, a good idea. But because it's advisory, I'm just saying that it's the kind of thing that is not going to be, show up in any kind of permanent document. That's going to be a kind of a guiding star to future city councils, not just the one that's getting elected next month, but ones to be elected further down the road. Frankly, I think that the city would be better served, and the city council and the people who are interested in this topic, it would be better served to be put, to put this language or something like it in the strategic plan, because that's an ongoing document that totally directs the policy of the city, is a public document, can't really be amended or things dropped out of it unless there's some sort of public action taken. Whereas a charter, then, not a charter, but an advisory, a ballot question is a one-time thing that people will go and vote for. My other thought is, is that if it's on the ballot, it's going to pass. I dare say I'd be surprised if there were a single vote that would be cast against it. It's not like it's a controversial issue in Tacoma Park, because we're really not asking it. A question is, would you rather have A, or would you prefer for the council to do B? We're just saying, are these ideas or these goals that you think are worthy that the council should pursue? And based on the work of the task force, I think that it's pretty clear that the citizenry of this city has made it clear that this is what is important. And so I think what I would say is, let's just pretend we had the ballot question and move ahead with the ideas as we try to implement the task force's recommendations and as we set the standards for our future sustainability coordinator. We build these concepts in and expect that the sustainability coordinator, when that job is filled, it'll be filled by somebody who understands that this is one of the, one among a number of environmental goals that we want to have accomplished. So for that reason, I'm not in favor of putting it on the ballot, and I just assume that we go forth, starting with the new council, to continue to push on these environmental objectives, whether it's on the ballot or not. That's my comment.
Thanks. Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you, Mayor. I, you know, I'm very much in favor of these particular goals, reducing greenhouse gases from the city, commercial activities, residential, et cetera. I'd love to see an audit. I think that would be very helpful. And I'm ready to put money in the budget to do this. What I'm not supportive of, though, is putting it on the ballot. I talked about this the last time. I don't think the ballot is a good place for single items, policy items, because you don't necessarily know why people are supporting it or opposing it. You don't know if those who oppose it would actually like it to be much broader, and the reason they're not voting for it is because they want it to be broader. There might be others who disagree with how the funding is done, or some other aspect of it. It's not a way to get public discussion. It's just an item, you know, a single item on the ballot. I also think that putting, that the place for goals like this are in the strategic plan, where we can connect the goals and strategies with all the other initiatives that we're doing in the general area, because I think we should do more than just what's listed here. I think these are only some of the things we should be doing. So I'd rather work on it in a coordinated way with all the other environmental initiatives, as we've started to do, using as a basis the task force report, getting that into the strategic plan, and then moving forward with it in a coordinated fashion. So I'm not in favor of putting this on the ballot.
Councilmember Robinson.
I am in favor of putting it on the ballot. In fact, I'd prefer that we put something, a little more meat on it, meat on the ballot, as I mentioned last week about giving us the power over energy as waste materials, and therefore having some authority over it. But as far as this, what's, and I'm not, as far as this ballot question is concerned, I am interested in putting it on, because I think that it spreads the consciousness of the problem. I think it will spur us to action. I think it's good to listen to all of our constituents. And I had two constituents approach me at the street festival, and each one asked me, was there going to be anything on the ballot beyond the vote? Because they anticipated that, they didn't know if it was going to be a contested election in our ward, my ward, Ward 3. I don't know if it's going to be a contested election, but they said, well, why would I, why should I go down there if it's not a contested election? I'd prefer to vote, have some say in something. And I think that was maybe the most telling reason, the most, one of the most important reasons I've heard, is that people want to come down and consider things, have a say, have a vote, and make their desires known. And for that reason alone, I will support putting it on the ballot.
Any other comments on this? I'll just say that I agree with Councilmember Snipper's comments, and I mentioned last week that if the language were changed, I would consider changing from a no to a yes, but I'm going to stick with my no. I think that the arguments made push me toward a no. I generally don't like referendum questions, because I think they tend to be single-issue items that are in a void, and what this body does is consider all of those different issues and set priorities. I agree that a good place for it is in the strategic plan. And I also think that an audit may be a good idea, and that I don't think we need to necessarily find money to put in the budget for an audit, depending on what an audit might cost. It could be part of whatever the sustainability coordinator might do, and we're going to have that discussion later this evening. So I think some of the comments about what we might want to do should inform that discussion, which is two items from now, and should make it fairly clear that we have certain things that we want to do and should enable us to give clear direction to the city manager about what the deliverables might be, so that that can go out on the street. Councilmember Wright.
I just want to ask Mayor if there was any amendment you wanted to make to the language as written that might cause you to vote for it, or is it, would it be too much of a wholesale change, you think, to deal with in an amendment form?
I wasn't sure what the change in the language might be. I was just thinking that there was a possibility that if the language changed significantly, that it might sway me, but I didn't have anything in particular in mind. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. In general, I'll say that I think referendums are good for the community. I think it's another way of encouraging community involvement, as Councilmember Robinson said, to give people another reason to come down and vote. We do have, especially in some wards, a very low voter turnout, and I think adding referendums that are meaningful to the community can be an important way of trying to encourage people to come down and vote. I think it's also valuable to get the community feedback on ideas. Again, it doesn't, it doesn't say that we have to adopt things when they are just asking for opinion from the voting public. The council still has to work out details and make the final decisions on it. So I certainly support referendums. I'd like to see, you know, two or three on the ballot every election, if there were significant issues that we wanted to deal with. And I can't believe that at any time in this city, there are some things that we'd like community feedback on. And certainly, the environmental issues that Councilmember Wright has brought forward tonight, I think are important community issues. And so I encourage my colleagues to consider supporting this resolution.
Councilmember Clay, any comments? You're the only one who hasn't spoken.
I've said everything that I had to say last week, and while I appreciate the effort that Councilmember Wright is making, and I appreciate his commitment to the environmental issues in the council over the past four years, and, you know, trying to move these pieces forward. I would rather use this time to talk about actually, you know, providing funding in the budget for this rather than the initiative. Incredibly, I might even stay silent or go get a Coke during the vote, but I have said for the entire six years that I've been here that I think that ballot box budgeting and ballot box zoning and this sort of ballot box activity is not the way to go, so I'm going to sit here and vote against it.
And did you learn that from having lived in California?
I did learn that from having lived in California, in fact. And anyone who even reads, you know, USA Today should have already been bashed over the head with what a bad process the California Initiative process is. As I've said before, I think that there were 450 amendments to the Constitution when I left the state.
And I li- And I recognize, I say that recognizing that the California process is different. Ours is advisory.
I know, but you get the point.
Yes. I don't know which light went on first. Councilmember Robinson.
And this is the part where I have to say, I lived in California for 13 years. And I, though it is a flawed system in California, I believe that there are a number of alternatives to the California system as regards referenda and initiative. And one of them happens to be Switzerland. And the more I learn about the Switzerland process, the more I'm encouraged and impressed with the way they pass laws there. They have a very active referenda and initiative process, and it's very productive. So I don't think that California need necessarily be our only model that we look to or are fearful of.
Councilmember Wright.
I just want to say that the record should reflect that this is clearly not an idea that I stole from Councilmember Clay. And that's probably why it's not going to pass.
And just for the record, if we can have hands in the air of people who have officially resided in California? Okay, a majority of the council?
Yes, but I did work for a company.
Does spending summer at Lake Tahoe count?
No.
Oh, yeah.
The full summer, three months? Yeah, that counts.
Oh, okay.
I was working at a casino, but I was living on the Californian side.
That counts.
Sure. There you go, majority.
Oh, we're in trouble now. Okay, any public comment on this item?
I'm Robert Lance, again, 7215 Cedar Avenue. I have a couple of comments on the ballot language. Josh, you'd mentioned that it's clearly advisory. I'm not sure everybody reading this would know that it's clearly advisory. It doesn't use the word advisory. I mean, I know the word should and seek to connote advisory. I'm not sure that a layperson reading this would necessarily make that connection. So if it's going to be advisory, it ought to be using the word advisory.
I would ask the city clerk if there would be any information on the ballot that said this was an advisory referenda beyond the language that's in, in the referenda language itself.
This would be the language on the ballot. We would provide instructional language in other places that indicated that it was advisory. But I think this is the actual language that would be on the ballot, and I don't think there would be a further instruction on that. I don't think so. I think this is what would be there.
Okay. Now, I would, why don't you finish your comments, and then I can deal with that.
The other, the other comment that I have is that I think that people reading this, I mean, my looking at it, people might have some questions that if it does pass, people on the council should be prepared to communicate. Meaning, if it does get on the ballot, people are going to have, I think, questions that you council members may want to discuss how to respond to. It says significant greenhouse gas sources. Someone is going to ask what the definition of significant is. It says budget and appropriate funds. Somebody's going to ask, well, how much funds? People ask those sorts of questions. So in terms of the communication of, you know, if this actually gets on the ballot, people are going to ask questions about it, there needs to be some sort of a communication plan in order for you council members to hopefully, in kind of a uniform manner, answer some of the questions that people might have. Last comment I have is that historically, and unfortunately, Tacoma Park has seen instances of a very low voter turnout. I'm not sure that this will get additional people to the polls or not. I always hope that people come, but I mean, there is a risk here that some people are going to vote no because of the uncertainty, not because they don't support the idea. So just be prepared for, you know, those sorts of questions also if this does get on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments on this item? Any last council comments?
I would just say that since I'm highly confident it's not going to pass, I'm not going to spend the time to wordsmith language on an amendment that we should put into the beginning to make it clear that it's advisory, but I agree with you that if it were to be on the ballot, that we would want it to be very clear that it's an advisory referenda.
If we can vote on this, all those in favor of this resolution, please say aye.
Should I, since Councilmember Wright was the first person who spoke, and Councilmember Schultz was the second person who spoke, should I assume that Councilmember Wright would be the motion maker, and Councilmember Schultz would be the second?
Yes.
Would Councilmember Schultz want to be the second?
Seconding only puts it on the table, it doesn't say how you're going to vote.
Okay, I'll second, I'll take that.
Okay, sorry, it's now officially been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
I hear three ayes and four nays. It fails. Thank you all. I think we can move to our next item, and then we'll hopefully get through that, and then take a short break before the final item, rather than taking the break now. So we'll move to the vision for recreation services, and I'll just say that since I wasn't sure how able I was going to be to speak this evening, I took a little time this afternoon and put together a memo, which I believe you all have, and which I believe also was in the, in the rack as well?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. But it basically takes the, the report from the Recreation Committee, and the, some of the items that the council talked about that were in Councilmember Wright's memo, and just kind of puts it in a little bit different format, tries to make it a little bit more understandable with some, some basically bulleted lists, so it's easy to call things out with a couple of sections. I was trying to do this to move things along, and the idea was that we could agree to a general vision, that there might be some specifics that needed to be worked out, and that we could direct that the Recreation Department and the Recreation Committee have some further discussions and come back to us at a later, yet soon, date. I note that the next Recreation Committee meeting is a week from tomorrow, which is the 11th. So their meeting is after this meeting and our next meeting, and then we would have two additional meetings before the end of the month, where if we needed to put something, to come back after they've had some discussions, or we also have that November 14th date. So, and that was the self-imposed deadline that we put on this item to try and get direction going forward. But my hope was that we could have some agreement on the general vision that would enable the City Manager to go ahead with continuing to advertise for a director position, and that the council will continue to refine this. And I'll just, as a final note, say that my sense was that when we talked about providing a vision, that some of the more detailed aspects that some people have gotten into in terms of listing some goals or things like that, it might be that we would be best informed by a report back from, excuse me, back from the Recreation Committee and the Recreation Department after they've had a chance to look at the general direction, that I would just caution us on getting too involved in too many of the details, because we may not know whereof we speak. Councilmember Clay.
I just want to say that frequently, when we have tried to press issues around the Recreation Department, we have gotten back from staff that previous councils have developed policies that are, in fact, kind of more related to lower-level goals and objectives and specifics of the department. And so, one example would be the policy around how we charge for activities. So we've talked about the policy philosophy of providing low rates for everybody versus providing rates that reflect the actual cost of the programming, and the model that I always put forth was that for Tacoma Park residents, it would just be the cost of the staff, and for the county, it would be staff and overhead minus the building, and for other people, it would be sort of the full-ride cost of the program, and then to provide a lot of scholarship essentially for folks who need the scholarship. And when we've had that discussion, the conversation that has, has come back is that previous councils, and boy, they'd have to be really previous councils, because they'd have to be, at least six years ago, had set a policy that we would just have sort of broad-based low prices for everybody all the time. So I think that is, and I could, I could come up with other examples, but I think that's probably a pretty good example of how we've actually been asked to be specific about some items.
Councilmember Wright.
My comments here at the beginning are mainly about the process we're going to use to get through this, and what I would suggest is that we actually look at the Mayor's memo, and the memo that I've written previously, which was just a summary of the presentation and interviews with council members, and actually have debates, discussions, and votes on those discrete elements, on things like the name, you know, do we want to change the name? There's some questioning around kind of a very high-level framework or mission. There's some questions around, do we want, you know, is our general disposition to leave funding level and resource at the same? Do we want this integrated service model? Do we want the barbell focus in terms of old and young? I think if we got through those things and actually had votes, we'd have a sense of where we are on each of these issues. So that's one process item. And then the second process item is that I think it might be helpful at particular opportunities as we're going through those discussions, since they're here, we have the Acting Director and another member of the staff of the Recreation Committee, that we might give them opportunity to talk on particular items, to hear their opinion, and factor that into our decision-making.
Anybody else with a comment? Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I especially thank you for pulling this document together today, and I think you've done a good work of putting this framework together from the recommendations that were provided by the Recreation Committee, and the summarization that Councilmember Wright did of his various interviews with council members. I think it's, it's very helpful. As I went through this and looked and read through this today before coming here, as I said in the email to you, I think there was a lot of commonality between what the Recreation Committee suggested and what was in the summary from Councilmember Wright. I think there were very few differences, and I think that what you put down here in the paper is something that I can agree with. I would, I think we talked earlier, when we first froze the Recreation Director position, we talked about wanting to have a mission and goals laid out for the department, because that is how the council actually says what we want, what the community wants from the department, whatever we call it, whether, I keep referring to it as Recreation Departments, because that's what we have today, although I would certainly support and do support changing the name to be more inclusive of the types of functions that we expect it to, to perform. So I think to give clear direction from this council, we need to have laid out a mission of what we want the council, the department to accomplish, and that we need to lay out specific goals. But I think this, as the first step towards that, your document is where we need to start. And so I, I would just suggest amending step number two in the next steps, to be more specific in saying that, that our goal is to finalize a mission and goals for the department, so that we have that clear direction for city staff that they're always asking us for. What is it that we really want? So again, I, if this was a formal process, I would, I would second your motion, or I would move this for you, whichever way you want to do it.
Did you have any additional suggestion for, for exact mission language?
I did. I didn't know if we wanted to get into that level of detail tonight. I can call it up on my computer if you want to.
Okay, I'll move for the comments, but just to, just in case you have that, or other people might have that as well.
And I would like to move this as an action that we take tonight.
Okay, we're in work session, so I'll take that as a kind of a informal motion, but we'll keep discussing. And I'm seeing a sea of lights, and I don't know what order they went in, so, oh, Councilmember Schultz was next.
I think that it's important that we get the opinions and advice of our professional Recreation Department staff, because after all, we hired them because they're good people, they've got a lot of experience, they're in the trenches day-to-day, and I think that, and I know we're going to take the opportunity to hear some of that tonight, I think it's important. And the reason I mention it is that we've gotten the input, and we'll continue to get input, from the Recreation Committee, and from anybody in the, who resides in the city is certainly welcome to do that, as well as our own, but I don't, I would certainly don't, don't want to diminish in any way the ideas that we might garner from our own staff, who are on the ground with this stuff every day. I'd like to react with Councilmember Siemens' idea of, or his goal of having a goal and mission statement. And I know you sort of sent something around on email earlier today, Mr. Siemens, so, but I, I want to make sure that whatever we come up with in our final product out of this thing has enough definition to really provide the kind of direction that the City Manager and the future Director of Recreation can lean on as policy guidance, and that we not just sort of accept, you know, a few sentences of a mission statement as the outcome of all the thought and work that so many people are putting into this, into these deliberations. And so therefore, I'd recommend that, you know, that we try to aim for that kind of policy. I do like Councilmember Wright's suggestion on process for this evening's discussion. I think we can just go through on that on a series of straw votes. Seems like that would be a form of narrowing and focusing that would be workable. Thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Snapper, followed by Councilmember Robinson and Councilmember Clay.
Thank you, Mayor. By way of introductory comments, my sort of approach here was to take a look at the materials we have, and I want to compliment staff who worked on developing this draft. I know it still has, you know, was done very quickly, and I'm impressed
I know it still has, you know, it was done very quickly, and I'm impressed with the amount of work that could be done that quickly. It is, of course, a draft, so it's got some holes in it, things to work on. But I was very pleased that it incorporated both comments from, or all the comments from the recreation department, from councilmember Wright's summary, and from the discussion we had last time. And my own perspective is that the council is a policymaking body, and I hope we won't get into program design. I think program, big picture, goals, and strategies is an appropriate role for the council, but I think the recreation department is the ones who would actually design the program in detail. I don't think the council should either demand or exclude specific programs, but focus on the bigger picture of visions and goals and strategies and things like that, and let the recreation department, as others have said, do their job. I think that this, the material that we have put together, that councilmember Wright has put together, the rec committee has put together, and the staff have put together are very complimentary. I think they cover the issues quite well. And I think going forward, with some tweaking on some of the individual items, which I'm sure we'll do in the discussion, we'll be able to come up with a pretty coherent, both vision and goals for the recreation department. And finally, I want to say, I hope that we will, that this is an example of what the council could do for other departments, that is, I really believe we should not single out one department, but rather, we should take the opportunity periodically to go around and focus on each of the departments in the city in this kind of concentrated way. I don't think it's useful just to focus on one department. All the departments could use this kind of focus.
Councilwoman Robinson.
Yeah, thank you for pulling this together. Thank you, councilmember Siemens, for your mission ideas. I did look at those mission ideas and compared them to the framework that's listed in the memo that Mayor Williams passed around. And what I see is that, I see three things that kind of stand out in councilmember Siemens' mission that aren't in the framework that we have in front of us. And those are improved self-image for city residents, better interpersonal skills, and increased self-sufficiency abilities. Those are the kind of three things that stand out to me, which are admirable, things to want to lead city residents toward. And I'm not against putting them in that mission. I think that the recreation department and the library are the two departments that we have that interact most directly with citizens, with people, providing direct programs of one sort or another. And so, I think it's appropriate to craft language that brings them in as people. And the other point I wanted to make was about the priority number one under the memo, which talks about life skills, leadership development, including job skills and entrepreneurship. And I think I can probably classify myself as an entrepreneur. I've started several businesses and invented this for a long time, most of my life. And I think there are two things that I can, that come to my mind as far as entrepreneurship goes. One is entrepreneurs typically take risks. They do things that are risky and are able to have some sort of sense that there will be a reward. It doesn't always happen. I'm not sure that our recreation department or the recreation arts and life skills is in a position to teach people how to take risks. On the other hand, entrepreneurs typically like to hire people with, I'd say, three different things. One's an ability to read and write and speak. One is the willingness to take responsibility, because as an entrepreneur, you want to be able to trust whoever it is you hire. And the third is to have either a specific expertise or a very strong sense of curiosity and ability to learn, because if you don't know the skills that you're, that are on the table, then you should be able to learn those skills in a way quickly enough and in a way that will help the business at hand. I'm a little wary of teaching entrepreneurship. I am much more interested in teaching the kinds of skills, whether they're called job skills or life skills or whatever, that make entrepreneurs more likely to hire people. So, in general, I'm appreciative of your memo and in favor of incorporating it. Specifically, I would like to see the mission expanded somewhat to include those kind of soft notions that councilmember Siemens has introduced, and I'll just leave it at that.
Councilwoman Clay, followed by Councilwoman Siemens.
I don't think it's a good idea to change the name of the recreation department. I'm trying to think how I will speak without being mean. So, you know, if you could come up with a two-word name for the recreation department, I'd probably be more supportive. But I just think, you know, a name for a department that goes on and on and on is, it's just not that helpful. Design new logos, and I suppose you know, yeah, you can design new logos, but it's just such a mouthful, and I think we need to be more succinct than that. So, if you don't think recreation is encompassing enough, I think it is, because I think it's commonly understood in a number of recreation departments across the country, there are a variety of missions, and many of them have significantly expanded missions. You go into more urbanized area, you're much more likely to find more expansive views of what recreation is. And in fact, you might even find that if you go into really rural areas, it might involve cows and pigs and things like that. So, you know, herding activities. We've tried to catch a greased pig. It's really kind of funny to watch people try to do that. And good exercise. But the point is, that, yeah, the name is just really, it's just really long. So, I think if we're going to do that, we should find, if we want to express something broader than that, I would like us to limit it to just, you know, no more than three words. Like, recreation and culture, or, you know, something like that, shorter. I also, I would agree with most of the things that people have said here tonight. I think we do probably need to be much more explicit about the integrated services. And the piece that councilmember Wright produced talked about two of them that are, that I, you know, that I'm particularly close to, and one is around growing, growing things in the garden and then harvesting and, you know, some of the local foods pieces, commercial kitchen activities, which is where I think all, that's a lot of an entrepreneurial skill that you're, that you're going with there. One of the things I think that is key in that, councilmember Robinson, is that, you know, I would agree that there are, there's an inherent nature to people who are successful entrepreneurs. I don't think all successful entrepreneurs have, sort of exhibit all of those things in the same way. Like, you might find people who are shy, who actually are good entrepreneurs, but you might not think of them in that way because they have some other part of the skill set. But what I think is important in the way that the programs are developed in a recreation setting is that they provide structured outlets for everybody to bring their different skills to the table. And so, one of the things about the, sort of the model of, you know, doing the market garden and doing, you know, jellies or mustards or herbal vinegars and processing and that is that, you know, some kids get to sell, and some kids get to grow things, and some kids get to bottle things, and other kids get to design labels, and, you know, so you can go across the spectrum, which is, kind of comes back to the integrated services. So, you're looking at how you can use an activity that the recreation department engages in to teach a lot of different skills and engage a lot of different people based on their interests. The other thing that I want to say is that I'm really interested in seeing the city run the Piney Branch Pool and to run an aquatics department. And we haven't really talked about that, you know, since six years ago, when I got elected to the council, and I was like, hey, let's get control of the pool and run the pool. But I want to throw that out there as well, because I think when we talk about looking at the assets that our community has and engaging those assets to provide innovative opportunities for our residents, the pool is an asset that we have, that we could do a lot of, a lot of different things with, so. I want to support the pieces that the mayor and councilmember Wright have developed. And I also want to come back around to the issue of life skills that we talked about before. I want to make sure that we give that a fair hearing and that it doesn't end up just being words on the paper that don't have any real push behind them. And so, I wanted to kind of make sure that we give that fair play as well.
Councilwoman Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of points. Councilmember Robinson had brought up the mission that you referred to earlier, Mayor. And I would just like to suggest that we have quite a chunk on the table in front of us tonight, and that we, I think for us to agree to a mission statement is important. I think that I would like us to maybe do that next time rather than this time. Let's get through, reach an agreement on the memo that you sent out today, and then we can, and then we can look at the mission and goals starting next week. That would be my suggestion. And I would also like to respond to councilmember Snapper's discussion of goals, and I think he's absolutely right. The last thing in the world I want this council to do is to get down in the weeds and start saying that we need this program and we don't want that program. I think we need to be setting goals that tell the department what we want, not how to accomplish it. And so, a food program might be a good way to accomplish something, but we need to be setting the goals of what it is that we want to accomplish. And maybe that is, you know, having programs that develop the life skills, and then maybe the recreation director and the staff look at that and say, gee, we could do a food program because there are resources here in the city where we could actually grow some food, and we could have a commercial kitchen, and we could teach young people a number of life skills through the process of growing the food and cooking and preparing food and serving food, much like, you know, some of the other cities around the country do. And it isn't that we would be teaching a whole laundry list of specific, different vocations, but that we would be, have a set of programs that would be working towards the goals that this council sets. So, again, I'd like to draw attention back to Mayor Williams' memo of today, if we could.
Okay. Councilwoman Wright.
I again think it would be good if we went through some of these individual items and got straw poll. And did straw polls. I do want to comment on the name change. I'm not really in favor of the name change. I would actually like to hear from recreation staff on this item specifically after I finish my comments. But I think back to something from business school. When I went to Yale Business School, at the beginning of my time there, the degree was called an MPPM. It's basically business school. Everybody knows from business school, you get an MBA. And so, here you had all these students, other than me, who are relatively smart, trying to figure out how to explain the degree they were getting to people when they were going in and talking to recruiters or getting hired. And the idea behind this alternative name was that the school was supposed to be thought of as a place that educated leaders for society, that thought about the three sectors of business, nonprofit, and the government together. At the same campus you had Yale Law School, the best law school in the country, kind of year after year, and also known for having very socially conscious students and having a very socially conscious brand and doing things a little different than normal. But you just got a JD from Yale Law School. There wasn't any confusion about what degree you had. During my time there, they changed the name of the degree to an MBA at the Yale Business School, and I think that was an amazingly important decision. And I also think the same thing is true of our recreation department. We can call it a recreation department. People generally know what that means. We won't have to be explaining that to residents or people we're trying to hire to come and fill the position. And at the same time, in our language about what our policy is, what our mission is, we can set a broader vision than what people might generally think of as just recreation. So, that's my comment on the name. And then, the next thing I just wanted to comment on is I fully agree with Terry and Ruben, and what many people have been saying, that I don't think we want to get into the weeds. We don't want to talk about specific programs in terms of direction. And I know in the memo that I wrote, we do that, I do that on occasion, but only as illustrative examples. I'm not trying to say that we should have a food program, or that we should do the aquatics center, but more that I find it helpful to people to understand what we're talking about when we mention something like integrated service delivery, which I do think is a policy decision. I know there's kind of a, Terry, you said we should have goals, we shouldn't tell people how to do it, but I don't, I think that's a little bit in-between. It sort of says, there is a policy perspective on a way to deliver service that has a whole host of benefits, both for the people delivering the service as well as for the individuals. And I think that is a policy decision and something we should have a vote on. But beyond that, I don't, I think, you know, we should leave it up to the rec department to figure out what the details of those integrated services would be, or what the details of the community assessment would be to develop the highest quality programming.
Councilwoman Siemens.
Thank you. I'd just like to react to your suggestion that the pool or swimming programs, that we shouldn't talk about that. And I think that we're talking about a resource, not specific programs in that case. And so, I think in that particular case, we shouldn't be talking about that tonight. But that was, it isn't a, you know, it isn't a stroke-and-turn program we're talking about. We're talking about whether or not this, we want the city, the government, to be involved in that particular resource.
And I'll just add that for something like the pool, that's probably a discussion that would almost need to be by itself. Again, it has much larger budget implications than some of the other things that we're talking about. So, I think if we were going to, if we were going to go there, we might want to say, you know, gee, we're interested in revisiting the budget implications now that we may know a little bit more information.
But it certainly affects the choice of a recreation director, that if you're going to have a pool with aquatics programs, you're probably looking for skills that you wouldn't be looking for if you didn't, if you said you didn't have a pool and aquatics programs. So, I think there needs to be, you know, that's a major thing before actually going out and starting the hiring process or restarting it.
I hear you. My sense-
You don't have to like these.
My sense is that it might require fitting that, if this council said, gee, we'd like to consider including it, and it would be good if the city manager recognized that it might be included in something that the next council would consider as part of the budget process, because there would be, you know, various aspects to taking it over that wouldn't be simple. My sense is, without having given this forethought, that it would probably involve some MOUs and some, some cost decisions based, you know, that just, I don't know what those are. I remember that we had some sense of it beforehand. Maybe the city manager just wants to give a quick, off-the-cuff thought about implications of considering pool.
You know, I think you could handle it either way. I don't necessarily think that if the council decided to take over the pool, it necessarily means that the director then himself or herself has to be a pool expert, but certainly, there would be someone in the department who would have to go through training. The former rec director, Deborah Hadevin, and I had talked about this, and I know she had gone through some kind of aquatics program, through some sort of set training, that someone in the department- training that someone in the department would need to go through, whether that's the director or not, you know, is a different decision. I do think we would need some time to study the budget implications, but we could do that at whatever time the council chooses.
Right. I agree with you. I think it would just be very helpful for you in recruiting to know that we are planning to have a aquatics program, if in fact, or that we're going to be running a pool too. And, you know, go back, it was a compromise to say we would only freeze the position to this point in time. And I think, you know, I support the decision that we made, but I know it puts us into some difficulties too.
The other thing I would just add, I mean, you tend to, in a recruitment profile, to kind, especially in a recreation setting, to list the facilities that the city has available to it. If this is still an open question, I don't know that would necessarily have to be withheld before I recruited, but what I would probably do is at least put in the recruitment material that this is an issue that is under consideration by the council, so someone is aware of that.
Okay. Thanks, Senator. Councilmember Reckley, you have a comment?
I do. I don't think you have to have a recreation director that's a pool expert. I think what we need is a recreation director who is open to looking at all the resources that we have and understanding that one of those resources is a pool. And if we decided to operate it, being committed to understanding what some of the high-level issues are. But I think that you should have an aquatics director. And if you're going to have a pool program, you should have an aquatics director that has that as their specific skill. I mean, it's so critically important to keep people safe. And, you know, all the things about lifeguard training and all the things that go with that are a subset, essentially, you know, a subset of recreation, and it would just be best to have somebody who's a professional in that. So they just need, so the rec director just needs to be open to it.
I'm happy at this point to have a structure for going through and having some straw votes so we know what we want to include here. And if people are amenable, I can start with the categories that are on my memo. And if there are pieces that we want, you know, like, and we get to each piece, if people want to say, and let's, you know, add something, then in fact, we want to say, okay, look at the whole group. Do you want to add anything? Do you want to subtract anything? Or whether it'll be necessary to get down to straw votes on individual items. We'll just kind of play that by ear.
Okay. I propose the first group, the whole thing.
The acting director of the recreation department has moved up to the dais. I don't know if, whether that means that you would like to say something, but if you would-
It says his name is Suzanne Lobo.
It's a name change. It's a name change.
Did you have any comments?
Yes, I'm actually going to address councilmember Wright's question as far as my stance on the name change for the recreation department. And without dismissing any comments that were made by council and the recreation committee and others, I wholeheartedly agree with councilmember Wright, that I believe that the name recreation encompasses a lot of things and that the majority of what we're talking about can be accomplished through the goals and the policies that are set before us by this body, which we can narrow down and really get a focus on, you know, the areas that we want to move in as far as a recreation department.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody want to argue for the name change?
I think-
Go ahead. You want to do the whole thing?
No, no, I'm, as far as the name change goes, I think the reason that this comes up is because there's been this feeling, at least on my part and possibly by others who propose this change, that some of the confusion that we've had over the past years, when so many of us have been, expressed disappointment with what the recreation department was providing, came from, I think the recreation department was providing recreation. And that seems like a great idea when naming the department as Recreation Department. But I think that many people wanted more from the department than just fun and games. And so there was a feeling, at least on my part, that by expanding the name, it would be clearer that we were looking for not just recreation, but also cultural education and personal skills, or I think it's called life skills is what was suggested in the title. I'm certainly supportive of councilmember Reckley's suggestion that we wordsmith the title to be more decorative on a logo or whatever. But I think it's important, whether we do it through a mission, whether we do it through a goals, I think it's important for us to be clear to the staff of what we want and what we want to accomplish. And since we haven't had the missions and we haven't had the goals, let's go with a name change.
Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a process suggestion. I think it's going to be hard for us to work through the various positions on the name change until we have gone through the rest of it. Because by going through the rest of it, we will be, in essence, developing a vision, some goals, strategies, and so on. And I think at the end, we might then feel like we need a name change, whereas now, most of us are, or quite a few of us are, like, you know, we're bothered with a name change. So I just suggest as a process, we move that name change to the end.
Seems reasonable. So we'll move to, did I suggest framework? Maybe just to make sure that people know what we're talking about, I'll just read this language and then we can see if we like that, if we want to call it something else. "To come up with recreation programs will employ a broad and generous definition of recreation beyond traditional recreation programs to emphasize a healthy lifestyle, physical well-being, citizen involvement, and integration of differing cultural and economic communities. Recreation is a vital and necessary part of community life, equal in importance to all the other functions and services of the city government, and helps to build and strengthen our community. Programs will be inclusive and appeal to a wide range of community members with a strong focus on making a difference in the lives of young people while also recognizing the needs of seniors. Particular emphasis should be directed to those under, and I filled in the blanks, of 18, under 18 and over 60. Somebody may want to argue with those numbers, but I think it's good to put numbers there." Comments on this section?
Councilmember Snipper?
I'm sorry?
You got leftover light? Councilmember Reckley?
Fifty and up.
Councilmember Wright?
So I agree with the language here. I'm a little confused by the terminology framework, because it feels to me that the first part is more of like, almost a mission aspect. And the second part is actually just a discrete question about what age population or what the dynamic of the population we want addressed. So I'm happy to vote yes on both those things, but I think we're going to get into a kind of what things are mutually exclusive and collectively exhaustive kind of situation as we walk through all these items. So I'm in favor of those two things. I just think the two items should be separated into their discrete parts. The first two paragraphs really being, to me, about, basically, whether you use Terry's language around mission, it's kind of a mission piece in the second part. The third paragraph being really about the populations to be addressed.
Okay. And I pulled the framework language from the recreation committee report.
The age bracketing here, under 18 to over 60, I wonder if that actually accomplishes what we're, what we here as a group probably are all desirous of. I mean, most recreation departments probably focus, as a generalization, already focus on people under 18 and the folks over 60. But I think what we're really looking to is to help the youngsters in this community who come from, who are in family situations where they don't have ready access outside the community to the kind of recreation opportunities that kids who come from well-to-do families do. I mean, let's face it, you've got kids under 18 that can go to summer camps in Vermont if their parents, you know, have the money. You've got kids under 18 in this community who are never going to learn how to swim unless somebody takes them by the hand and gets them to that pool or wherever it might be. So I think our focus is not just age categories. I mean, the same thing could be said for those over 60, who if they want to, you know, learn to go scuba diving, they can catch the next plane to St. Martin and not worry about it. So I think our emphasis needs to be more in the direction of trying to provide recreation services that, to the economic levels of our community, that really need the access that they would not otherwise be able to get. I mean, the closest thing right now beyond us would be probably the Silver Spring YMCA, which is, offers, you know, a wonderful set of programs fairly affordably, but it's still not as accessible as our recreation center, physically accessible and that sort of thing. And some of those programs do cost money. And so I don't know whether this framework paragraph or section ought to include direction with regard to helping certain economic groups in the community, under 18 and over 60, who want to be able to participate and learn recreational things in the broadest, most general sense of the word, but can't because of economics or household issues.
Okay. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. This framework, as somebody mentioned, is kind of close to a mission, but it kind of wanders off in some other directions, too. If we were to think of it, like, the first paragraph as a mission statement, I kind of like mine better that I sent around by email today, but of course, prejudice on that. I wrote it. What I had was, the mission of the department is to lead citizen, to lead city residents to healthier lifestyles, improve self-images, better interpersonal skills, and increase self-sufficiency abilities through the provision of cultural, sporting, personal development, and recreational programs. Like, it's short, sweet, it includes all the things that we have talked about, that the recreation committee talked about in their, in their paper recommendations to us. And I think that some of the other things that you have here in the framework, such as the age range, I agree with. I don't think they would go in a mission statement. And I think that some of the things that, one of the things that councilmember Schultz suggested, that maybe economic levels would be something else that maybe is mentioned somewhere, but not in the mission statement.
My sense on that is that if we could say that we, we wordsmith the mission statement that addresses those first two paragraphs, councilmember Siemens' language, and that we'll come up with a mission statement that addresses those areas, and we'll come up with another section that we label whatever we label it, that talks about the age and economic-
I think that would be a goal, you know, who we want to focus our service on. And then you can measure that by how the-
By what sort of degree. Right. So is there agreement that we want to do mission and goals that way from that section? And, you know, I'm not partial to this particular language. I like-
Councilmember Siemens' language. We just do the mission from that one. Goals, starting with the third paragraph there with the added information on economics levels. We're doing thumb voting here.
What was the third paragraph?
The third paragraph would be the one that's here in the third paragraph of the framework that addresses age, but we're also going to add economic levels language to that.
Don't even sign the plumb, just throw votes.
I see six thumbs and a pass. So my sense is that we will continue this discussion next week. We will have specific language on mission and goals that we can adopt, that follow that framework, and we may be adding something to that as we continue the discussion this evening, in terms of what else goes into it. We want to look at the priorities section next. It has six items. We can add, we can subtract. It's got, first and last, life skills and leadership development, including job skills and entrepreneurship. I'll have a quick comment about entrepreneurship in a second. Common ground for diverse cultures, health and nutrition, art classes, fitness and games, job bank. And let me just say that my sense of entrepreneurship wasn't necessarily, excuse me, teaching entrepreneurship kind of as a direct goal, but to provide opportunities for kids to find work in the community. I think we've had fits and starts of that with things like leaf raking or snow shoveling or those types of things, yard work. I'm not sure that there's been the appropriate level of emphasis on that. And I think that if you think back to some of the things that we may have heard from some people whose opinions we value, including the police chief, they say that some of the most important things for our kids today are jobs. And I think there was some forum where kids got together and said what their number one thing was, and a lot of them wanted jobs, work, ways to earn money. So that's how I interpret job skills and entrepreneurship. And that maybe, you know, maybe if that is best said by the sixth one, job bank. But I think job bank just kind of, in my mind, is language that's kind of a static approach of, we'll just establish the bank and just, you know, let them find jobs. You know, you're providing a mechanism. But I think it involves some, in that way, handholding on how to do that and the skills involved. I see lots of lights. I'll just go down the row.
Councilmember Robinson.
Well, here we are in the weeds, as far as I can tell. And if we're going to offer job skills and expect that, and have the expectation that kids will be making money in the recreation department, or the department, whatever it's called, I think that's leading down a kind of a slippery slope. And you mentioned, Mayor, I mean, I'm just taking your word, that they'll want to get job skills and then make money. So I'm concerned that running a, what, is it a volunteer program or is it a jobs program? And are we budgeting a certain amount every year to pay kids to do something, but we're not exactly sure? So I have real trouble with that. And the job bank, a good idea, the task there would be to get, to convince businesses around the city to post jobs for kids-
to post jobs for kids, for younger kids, kids under eighteen. And I don't know how much energy we want to put toward that. I'm a little wary of that one, too. I'm just, I'm wary of the government getting into employment programs for youth.
Councilmember Wright. So I think my first thing might be semantical, but I think it's also helpful, is that the priorities is, are kind of like a, they're not all the same. They're kind of this mix of stuff. Some of them, I agree with Councilmember Robinson, are like very in the weeds, like that we would tell the recreation department that we want a job bank specifically, right? So to me, it's like, what level can we step up to so we're out of the weeds, and what's the goal, right? So if we say youth employment is the goal, and then we could think about some measure of it, what number of kids that by age fourteen, they go through the recreation programs have a job? Maybe that's the goal. I don't know exactly, but that's the, the idea that I'm, you know, the kind of level I'm trying to think at. And so, and then there's things like common ground for diverse culture. That almost feels like it fits into the mission statement. I don't know quite what we mean by health and nutrition, arts classes, fitness and games. So there's kind of this mix of stuff. So I, to me, one of the clear goals that comes out of this that we're interested in is youth employment. And so then to me, it's what's the measure that we want for, around youth employment?
Okay, Councilmember Snapper.
Thank you, Mayor. I was trying to develop an alternative here, but, so I'll just, a little bit off the top of my head. I, too, prefer a little broader view of these. And I would call it engagement instead of employment. I think employment has a very specific meaning and is appropriate for older youth. I'm not sure I would want to use employment for, you know, a thirteen-year-old. But the idea of engagement seems broader to me because engagement would include employment for olders, but, older teens, but it could include community service or community activities for younger teens. So I'd prefer myself some kind of phrase closer to engagement. And that would work well for seniors as well. Instead of having isolated seniors, I would like to have seniors who are engaged in their community, however that might, might be. So I might, I'd prefer that. I, perhaps it doesn't belong here, perhaps it belongs under approach, but I sure would like to see having fun and engaging in play in, in all of these. I know from my own personal experience with recreation programs, both as a participant and as a playground director for a number of years, unless people were having fun and enjoying themselves, they, they weren't going to participate. They weren't going to come back. And it certainly was hard on, on staff to try to get people to do it. So I, I really think that we need a, a heavy focus on fun and play in, in all of these. I like the idea of incorporating health and nutrition. I think those are unfortunate choice of words, but I think the concepts behind them are great. And I think fitness, again, I'm not sure I'd use fitness, but perhaps, activity. You know, just people not sitting on the couch watching television, not passive, but active. Some kind of focus on active activities. And active activities could be playing chess or playing Scrabble or something like that because that's, you know, active use of your brain. It doesn't have to be jumping jacks and lifting weights. I think instead of arts classes, I would think of something along the lines that we had talked about earlier, which I didn't see here, was some kind of appreciation of maybe culture and arts, or arts and crafts and culture, or something a little more, a little broader, that, that covered more of those kinds of, those kinds of issues. And I'll stop there with those three.
Councilmember Clay.
In the interest of time, I'm going to say that I agree with Councilmember Wright and Councilmember Snapper. I'm okay with health and fitness and those terms, but I definitely like the, the sense of talking about engagement as well as employment for young people. Engagement for the older youth might, might mean employment and, you know, providing job opportunities if that's what the needs assessment says is required for that age group. And I wanted to say that when I was talking earlier about the, the gardening project, it's not to say that, you know, we, that's, we, I want to write that into the policy that we have to have a gardening project. It was just to talk about the idea that entrepreneurship is, is broad and can be incorporated into the activities of the recreation department in a number of, of different ways.
Councilmember Schultz.
I'm curious what we mean by life skills. We've been using this word here for the entire discussion tonight and previous discussions, as though we all know what it means. And frankly, I think that it needs, I mean, just sitting here listening, I've been writing some ideas as to what it could mean. But because to talk about life skills without talking about what the heck we're talking about isn't going to accomplish anything. For example, you could talk about learning, a life skill would be learning to make friends. And I'm talking about people, say, under the age of eighteen. Or, you know, young, young people as opposed to adults and older Americans. Learning to share, learning to listen, learning to be a teammate. Now, those are all things that I'm sure that anybody who's a kid who's actively participating in the rec program is going to learn some of that stuff without having to put a label on it. Then you got other things that are practical, like learning how to change a tire on your bicycle, or learning how to swim so you don't drown, learning how to save money. And that's not something that you're born with or you're vaccinated with. Learning how to make a sandwich, or learning how to shop for necessary things and compare. Learning how to put things in the ground and grow them. And, and you can just go on with all those very practical. All of those are life skills. Whether you learn them in the recreation department, or whether it's something you learn in school, or whether it's something that you, that you pick up by osmosis from your, from your parent, is, is, you know, then there's, there's social skills. There's, there's learning how to, to dress for different occasions. Learning social skills as to how to introduce yourself, how to greet somebody, depending on the age of the person you're speaking to and the, and the envi, you know, the, the actual social situation that you're in. Learning how to speak publicly. Learning how to say hello to the person of the opposite sex in a, so that you can, you know, actually speak. And, and stuff like, I mean, to me, all of those are life skills. Those are all the things that we, we, we pick up, hopefully by a certain age, and some of us never learn them. I'm sure there's people in, in, in the community have never learned how to change a tire on a car because they can always get somebody else to do it. But it's a life skill. And, and I think if we sat here, we could come up with a couple hundred of these things. So the reason I'm, I'm going on here like this is just to sort of say, you know, just using the word life skills, saying that is just, I, I don't think it gets us anywhere very much because some of these things the recreation department is doing, and just in the normal course of, of running their programs, and what kids are picking up because of the coach that's talking to them or, or, or stuff like that. So, but yet, we don't want to get down into the weeds. But I, but I, until we talk about what life skills is, I, I don't see the need for having that in the, you know, as part of our priorities. To me, it's, it's just one of those words that has so many conceivable meanings that it, that it ends up meaning nothing, possibly.
Councilmember Seaman.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Schultz, I agree with you. You put in a one- or two-word catchphrase, and it doesn't tell you, it doesn't come with a definition, especially when you get to the two words. It doesn't necessarily come with a definition. I, I would just point out to you that in the mission statement that I proposed earlier, I never once used the term life skills. And for that very reason, it, it isn't definitive. I use terms, and I'd like to kind of go through these as we think about priorities, because I think the mission is kind of setting the, the framework for the priorities. And so I said that it would lead, the department would lead city residents to healthier lifestyles. So what would the goals be to do that? And I think, you know, health and nutrition, you know, I'd like to turn these things into goals. It's not really, not really a goal, but that's, falls in that little subcategory that we have on the sheet just as the one labeled fitness and games. I think someone suggested, what I wrote down as a note, of physical and mental activities, which is what we're really talking about, for fun, but also for developing healthier lifestyles. Okay? The second one I had in the mission was improve self-images. And I think that comes through, you know, just integrated work and, and attention paid by the recreation staff through any of the programs, that we want the, all of the people, whether they be young or old or middle-aged, that are participating in the programs, that we want to think about how, you know, we do help to improve people's self-image and, at the same time, not have negative effect on people's self-image. The third item in the mission statement that I proposed is better interpersonal skills. And again, I think that's one that crosses all types of programs. But now we get to one that, I think the, the fourth one in the mission statement that I proposed is, relates to what a lot of people are thinking of, or at least what I initially thought of when I heard the term life skill. And that is increased self-sufficiency abilities. Looking at how, what are the skills that are going to help the young people to lead a more self-sufficient life than maybe their parents have led? And that would be true across socio-economic barriers at, at, all levels. What can we do to help the young people to grow? Or how, what can we do to help those who are in middle age to grow to a higher level of self-sufficiency than they have right now, participating in the programs? And I think an example, and I, and I certainly appreciate Councilmember Clay's example of the food program. I think it's a perfect example. It isn't something that we're necessarily running a business and going out and opening, having the city open a restaurant and sell food, or to grow crops. To grow crops and, and open a table at the farmer's market. But I think that there are skills that can be learned in those types of programs that is a planned progression for young people and seniors and adults who might be, who this program might be designed for to progress through different levels of abilities that are going to lead them to greater skills that they can use for a higher level of self-sufficiency on through their lives. It isn't something they're just doing with the programs itself. And so those were the, the four primary missions of the, the department with, and then saying that it was, that these would be provided through cultural, sporting, personal development, and recreational programs. And so if we look at the cultural programs, I think, you know, as mentioned in here is art classes. I agree that that could be broader because I think we don't want people to envision art as being just visual arts. It could be many things. It could be drawings, it could be paintings, but it could also be writing. And, you know, there's a whole breadth of, of arts that I think of. And so the, the culture and art, I think, need to be defined in a way that everybody understands we're looking at something that's broader than just a painting class. And I think it's important, the, the word class is important because I appreciate that, you know, at some level we might want an arts and crafts kind of program. But at the other side, I think that as we look at using these programs as developmental tools, that it's more than just a, come in and make a placemat, but it's learning a skill during the time that you're taking a program. And so at some level, we've got some very, very talented people that live in this city that could be working with the recreation department. And we haven't gotten down to the part that talks about volunteers and partnerships. But I think we should capitalize on the resources, the human resources we have in this city with writers and painters and all the other musicians, the, the other artists that we have within the city that could really be helping to build some very dynamic and programs for all age levels. The, and I'm, I'm running on here, but the sporting, again, I think the games and the fitness all ties together with the sports. And again, I don't see the recreation department necessarily running all of the sports programs in this city. We have, again, volunteer groups that do a lot of the work. But I think the, the recreation department can make sure those things are happening and, and support those, whether it be through organizational work or facilitating the development of new programs. You know, the, I know the wiffle ball was something that grew out of the work of the recreation staff. And, and that was a, an example of how that the, the city can help to grow things, but it's, it's really built with a lot of volunteers, too. So again, we don't need to see the, the city government taking on all those tasks themselves, but knowing that that's a part of what we want to do. And then personal development, again, I think the personal development, some of that is, a lot of that can be done through the integration of particular skills within each of the programs. But there may be circumstances where there may be a, a personal development type of class or program that goes on. And I wouldn't want to lock that out by, by saying that everything has to be integrated. And then lastly, recreational programs. And I think they're, they should all be recreational programs. As someone else said, they, they should be fun, should be enjoyable, but they don't all have to be just fun and games. They should have other purposes. And I think we've got a lot of work. If we're going to turn these priorities into goals, I'm not sure we're going to be able to do that tonight. I don't know that that's, I don't think we can do it tonight. And I think when we get down to approach, I think a lot of those are going to be goals, too. And then we're going to end up with too many goals. And so we're going to have to fight with each other and pare it down and, and get it down to a reasonable number of goals. How many goals does an organization need? To be realistic, you know, we're maybe talking five goals. So I think we've got. So, I think we've got some work to do. I'd like to suggest that we, 9:41, take our break and come back and continue this discussion.
And I was going to suggest that we give it 15 more minutes and then take the break, and that it's 15 minutes only tonight, and we're coming back to it next week. Are people comfortable with what's been put out there? Councilmember Siemens has some goals or priorities here. We had some additional ones that was the language around the youth engagement, engaging in play and having fun, art and culture classes, active physical and mental activities that we can, I was going to suggest maybe Councilmember Siemens would want to develop language for those this week and put them out there, and we can wordsmith or send comments.
I would appreciate that. I think it would be helpful to me if I could find an MBA who would work with me on that.
Or was it MP, MPPM?
He said they changed it.
I fortunately got the MBA. I was just curious if Greg had any comments on that line of discussion that we just had.
Well, first. Okay. First, I would like to bring to the council's attention under the framework, section, paragraph three, that currently, senior programs for the recreation department begin at age 55. And it sounds like there's a consensus for the council. I think there's a word and there's a national movement in youth development, which sums up pretty much what everyone is saying. It encompasses developing young people holistically, their internal, well, when I was the youth coordinator for the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission, the agency utilized the 40 developmental assets to develop programs and activities for young people. One of the things that I required staff to do was to include and advertise and market which assets that were contained in each program that staff planned. So, this information was put into flyers and on the website, on brochures and things of that nature. There were a list of 20 internal assets and 20 external assets that all led to the successful development of young people. The more assets that you had as a young person that were on that list, that were contained in that particular program, the more successful you were likely to be in that particular program. For instance, there's an asset that said that young people need positive relationships with adults. So, with the basketball program that we currently run here, it's run by volunteers, which are part, which are providing positive relationships for the young people that participate in that program. So, in the basketball program, we would advertise that one of the assets was it would provide positive relationships with young people with adults, would provide socialization skills and other things that were contained in those assets, so.
I was going to suggest that for the, for this kind of approach section, that we could just go through and see if we had some agreement on these, and I was also going to turn the last four bullets into active statements by adding verbs at the beginning, like "build partnerships" or "promote volunteers and staff working together." I hadn't gotten down to the other two, but see if we kind of like those and that there's a way to kind of incorporate those into whatever we're doing and be able to come back next week with a draft mission statement and some goals and see where this, whether we want some other part of what we do to involve these as statements of what should be included, whatever it is we call them. Anybody got any, let's say, any problems with the first eight? Councilmember Snipper.
Yeah, I think, just to pick on one, number six, "help prevent crime by giving young people a positive alternative," seems to me like a goal. Help prevent crime. Number five, "create more personal relationships with hard-to-reach community members," seems like a goal. I think the first one, emphasizing social engagement to break down socioeconomic and cultural barriers, does seem more like approach. I think we need to, this is the place where the integrated services model would fit very strongly as an approach, because I think that's a major new approach to how we do So, for me, this section needs a fair amount of reworking. I'm not sure we can do it while we're sitting here.
Councilmember Wright.
Yeah. I just wanted to add that I think that there are a number of other items that are rolled into this approach aspect, so I think the integrated service model is one, I think the volunteers is another.
Yeah, I was going to get to the second four, I was trying to keep it at the top eight, just to deal with those without getting huge in what we consider, but I think the integrated service delivery and volunteer stuff is somewhat addressed in those.
No, but I think it goes to Ruben's point that a number of these things aren't really approaches, right? They're goals. And here, and then, there's some more specifics down in these prongs that get into approach as well, so it's, I just bring it up to say, I think that there's, agreeing with Councilmember Snipper, there's some things that are goals that need to be somewhere else in the goals category probably, and then there's some stuff in here related approach where the integrated service model, the volunteer stuff, maybe something about the connection between the rec committee and the rec department. Maybe even something about how we price and use scholarships, those might all be in the approach, I'm not sure yet.
And I was going to suggest that maybe we have, if that we have pieces here that we can work with and reassign, if they're goals, and work up with a tighter approach. And I would just recommend that we do it with bulleted lists or something so that it's easy to kind of ascertain which they are, and that we can come back next week with a reworked vision, mission, goal, approach, structure that is a lot clearer than trying to move these pieces around tonight, an hour and a quarter into the conversation. And that we can, we can do that, and I would suggest that Councilmember Siemens kind of heads up that task and that put out language, and we can all try getting some edits and wordsmithing and see if we can come back with something good for next week. And if there's anything that the city manager or the recreation director wants to direct our way that might be helpful, like some of the last comments about what you did in Prince George's County, and I think that, I kind of felt like, oh, we don't have to reinvent the wheel here. So, if there's some language like that that would be helpful, we can try and put this together and come back to it next week. Councilmember Schultz, did you have another comment?
Just a couple really quickies. The offer, number seven, "offer low-cost programs," sounds like the beginning of something interesting, but I'm not sure where, kind of itself.
And I had already modified that myself to say, "offer low-cost program opportunities."
Well, you know, to certain, the sectors, and the point was made to me by someone in the community today, that the programs that are parts of our community, or services and recreational opportunities that are parts of our community are able to easily go out and buy in the market at health clubs and places like that, you know, yoga classes, why duplicate what's already out there? Those are the, you know, and so, make those programs, those shouldn't be low-cost programs. They ought to be programs that are, don't compete with the private sector. The programs that we want to try to provide are to help those, I think in general, I'm not talking totally blank, but in general, the low-cost programs ought to be the ones that are targeted to the income groups that can't, are in a position to go out into the community and just help themselves to whatever they want. And the other thing is that Councilmember Wright's comment about the rec committee, I do think one of the approaches needs to be that we figure out a way to make the recreation committee a more stabilized committee and something that is, has got more defined purposes. That's our job, to define those purposes so that they can be of more use to the staff and that there's more of a dialogue that can go on day after, you know, on a daily basis between staff and the recreation committee in a very mutually constructive sort of way. I think that should be part of the, one of the approaches. Thanks.
Okay. So, Councilwoman Siemens will endeavor to pull together edits and get us something ASAP, and we'll get back with additional comments.
Right. We'll circulate email through the week and hopefully have something that we're closer to agreement when we meet here again next Monday?
Yes. We will be, this will be on the agenda next Monday, it already has a tentative hold there, so all we have to do is strike the word tentative and we're back at it. Anything else to cover in this before we take a break? Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I thought it was very helpful having Greg up here and Gregory.
Oh, that isn't Suzanne?
I would encourage you to consider coming back next week. Thank you.
Okay. We'll take a short break. We'll be back for our last item, which is identification of deliverables for the sustainability coordinator. Did the city manager want to say anything, or public works director?
Let me just be brief. As the council's aware, you allocated $150,000 in the FY 2012 budget to advance the recommendations of the Task Force Environmental Action, which included the hiring of a sustainability coordinator. The council's decision at the time was to retain the position or positions on a contractual basis. Tonight's work session is a follow-up to the email I had sent the council during the August recess, in which I had asked for the council to identify some deliverables, outcomes that you'd like to see from the position. This would be very helpful to the public works director and myself in terms of trying to figure out what would be the appropriate skill set and qualifications for the position. So, that's kind of what we're hoping to get out of this evening's discussion.
Excuse me, Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you. I have one global, global item, which comes out of what I would really like to see from the sustainability coordinator. I would like this person to develop a short, medium, and long-term plan for Tacoma Park using the items in the task forces report and all the staff work that we got, I think it was about a year ago, when the staff did a massive amount of work on a long list of items, pull that all together into a short, medium, long-term plan. And that each item would have full description of the item, strategy for implementing, how it, you know, worked together with the other items, a timeline for it. Is this a low-hanging fruit, short, small, do-it-sweet, just the city does it, or is it, just the city government does it? Or is this something that would be done by all the residents in the city, et cetera? And then, in addition to that, we'd have a timeline for it. When would it start? How long would it take? And then, finally, of course, what are the resources needed to do this? In some cases, it would, might be an educational campaign, in others, it might be buying a gadget and attaching it to the, you know, and that, to me, would be just the best deliverable for that sustainability coordinator to pull the material we already have into a plan that would be this short, medium, and long-term plan with including strategies for implementing it. And for me, the sustainability coordinator, therefore, would be someone who has the skills and knowledge to read the report and has experience developing plans like this. Would have to be somebody who could work with the community, because clearly, a lot of work with those who've been developed, those who worked on the task force and those of the staff who worked on the staffs, and they'd have to be able to, this person would have to be able to talk to them, draw out what they needed to draw out to develop this short, medium, and long-term plan for Tacoma Park. As Councilmember Wright likes to call it, the green deal for Tacoma Park. I'd rename it, rename it that. But anyway, that's my vision for the sustainability coordinator.
Councilmember Robinson.
Well, I want to thank Darrell for kind of putting into focus the question, one of the questions before us, which is, is this an internal kind of position or an external position? Those are kind of names I'm putting toward it, but does it have to do more with us making best use of our efforts inside the city, or does it also include reaching out to the public? And at first, I thought, oh, this should, this should just be an internal position, we shouldn't reach out. But as I've been talking to people about it, I'm thinking that both would probably be a better thing, and to use the, to pollinate, I guess it might be a word, people in Tacoma Park with ideas from within the city and vice versa, to take ideas from success, things that are successful in the general community and try to bring those into the city. And of course, looking at other cities and successes that people outside this, our city have. Beyond that, I don't have much to say.
Councilmember Wright.
Thank you. I agree with Ruben that there needs, one of the high-value items needs to be this kind of assessment of what's already been done and then putting it together in an implementation plan, a pragmatic one, that wouldn't take a long time to develop, with short, medium, and long-term goals and with a priority on bang for the buck. And by bang for the buck, I don't only mean savings, but just impact on, at a high level. The second thing is that a focus around ideas, particularly related to the city, that both are environmentally conscious but also save us money. The third is that I think, as the mayor's been citing recently, the big opportunity is external to the city government. I've heard different numbers, but it's something like 3% or 4% of the energy use in the entire city is by the city government, so we could use So, we could use no energy and essentially would have not a huge impact on moving the needle. We'd set a great example for others. But, so I think it's important to note that this person does have to be skilled at interacting with the public and being able to engage the public and think about ways to incentivize and work with the public so that they make changes in the energy use in their homes, in the cars that they drive, in their carbon footprint. And then I think there is a big need for us to put some way to figure out what our measurable goal is. It might be the idea of the greenhouse gas audit that was in the plan, but there needs to be something there where we say, we've had this sustainability person here, we've made efforts on the Green Deal for three years, and have we moved the needle on, what do you think about that? And then the last thing is to think about where this person reports into the city structure. I've been a proponent of that this should report directly to the city manager because I think it cuts across all departments and it sends a clear message to everybody that it's of a level of importance and on equal par with, with all the department heads.
And I'll just add that, as Councilmember Wright mentioned, I've been talking lately about the fact that I see the, the main emphasis as eventually being external. I think it would be good to start with the pulling together of all of the information so far as people have said, but I think what we're going to end up with is the, what we get the most bang for the buck is dealing with the externalities apart from the government. And you referenced the energy used by the city. I know that the, in the 2000 greenhouse gas report, it was one-half of one percent was the city energy usage for all city energy. So, I can, I can envision that there might be opportunities, for example, working with multifamily property owners to bring them together and work some kind of solar co-op where they, they have the opportunity to put solar panels on their roofs and the city has some experience with contracting for somebody to put solar panels on our roofs. So, therefore, we have some understanding of how that works, but there may be other opportunities and the market may be different for private property owners to do that. I know that people, some people around town are doing it individually on their houses, but is there the most bang for the buck to put it on the larger commercial buildings that have large flat roof areas and the tall multifamily properties? So, being able to work with different sectors of the community, the business owners, multifamily owners, and single-family owners, how, how best to reduce our overall energy usage in the city and make it sustainable? I think that will have, in the, in the long run, the most benefit. So, I can see the importance of dealing with all of those external partners. Councilmember Schultz?
Just listening to what the rest of you are saying makes me realize is that I, sorry. Thank you. Just went off again. Ah, good. Listening to your comments gets me to thinking that I see myself, well, I'm very much somebody who is worried, concerned, and activist with regard to environmental issues in the country, the world. I'm a layperson of the first rank when it comes to understanding the technology, where things stand, what's doable, what's sort of in the future, and what's sort of becoming obsolete in terms of what works. So, to me, I think that one of the roles that a Sustainability Coordinator might serve and serve well is being kind of a, an educator to residents, whether, you know, homeowners probably more likely than, but maybe commercial property owners as well, as a resource that doesn't have an axe to grind in terms of trying to sell you solar panels or some other whiz-bang kind of water heater or, you know, storm windows and this sort of thing. We get inundated more and more these days with what is claimed to be the latest technology that's going to save you money if you buy this and install it in your home or in your business and that sort of thing. It's a bit overwhelming and it could be very helpful, I think, to a lot of people who are genuinely interested in reducing their energy bills at home, carbon footprint, whatever the latest word or phrase is, but really don't know where to turn. And a little bit like the, we have an arborist who sometimes gets the chance, among his other duties, to actually educate people about trees and that, and that, and how they fit into our environment, so could the Sustainability Coordinator do something like that. And I think it would be a great help to all of us who want to spend money wisely to save money, you know, like on appliances and stuff like that. I mean, it's some, maybe it wouldn't be very sophisticated for somebody like, for, who's well-informed in the, this area, but for the average property owner, it could be extremely helpful.
Do you have what you need? Do you need more direction for deliverables? What do you need?
Several questions pop to my mind. I guess the biggest of one, kind of going from end to forward, is from what I've heard described particularly by Fred most recently, there are private folks currently in the business of energy audits for homes and things like that. Would you see the role of the Sustainability Coordinator as, as competing with that or as guiding people to, here's a list of the energy auditors that are licensed or approved or whatever on the state, State of Maryland's website. Here's the, you know, here's a list of four different companies that work in Montgomery County. Take your pick. I mean, there's those resources out there. Or, you know, to me, I'm having a hard time envisioning how this, are we going to be substituting for something that's currently in the marketplace? Or are we going to be compiling a list of all those resources available in the marketplace and giving kind of one place for residents to go to, to explore and determine themselves, you know, who they, who they want to hire for various types of energy reduction or alternative energy resources?
I'll just give you my quick reaction. Competing, no. Compiling, yes. Councilmember Clay?
In general, I don't, I think that times when the government should engage in activities that are already provided in the public sector is, should be rare. But I will say that when I was looking at doing energy, there's an energy-efficient loan program that you could access through the federal government, and I was looking at that when we were looking at different properties. And one of the things that was required was to have a certified energy audit from a company that was certified in the state of Maryland and there, when, that was six years ago. I mean, there weren't any active firms at the time, so, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, we could, so it sounds as if just compiling and making those resources available is more, would be closer to what you're getting at.
Let me double-check, Councilmember Wright and Councilmember Robinson.
I just wanted to add a couple things. That's right. I think it would be rare that we'd want to compete to do the energy audit ourselves. I think there'd be compiling, there might be opportunities to do bundling, right? So, that the individual might help a group of individuals or member residents actually strike better deals by doing joint purchasing. I would also say that the energy audit field, my experience of it has been a little bit odd in the sense that often someone will advertise themselves as an energy auditor, and they are, they're licensed to do that, but they also then have a company that sells a particular product. So, if you get an energy audit from a attic insulation guy, you get the energy audit, then the number one recommendation is attic insulation. And then you might get it from a window company instead or a, so some of it would be making sure there was situations where there wasn't an axe to grind. And then just lastly, I would say that I think there's a big role to play in energizing and getting people to do it, right? So, it's, it's like many things in the world. If you ask people, do they need to eat more carrots and vegetables and fruit? They'd say yes. If you ask them, do they need to save more money and budget and spend wisely? They'd say yes. Many of us don't do that. If you ask people, many people in Tacoma Park, should you get an energy audit and improve the efficiency of your home? They would say yes, but they haven't done it. And so, a lot of it is to be the rallying cry and figuring out the, the ways to engage people and community to actually take the steps to do it.
Sure. So, one of the deliverables, deliverables might end up being, coming back to the council within the first year saying, here's incentive programs that you could adopt in your next fiscal year to, that I, that I think will help to energize people to.
It could be incentive programs. I mean, Weatherized DC is an interesting model where they actually try and get people, you know, to get like a, they take almost like a political campaign approach, right? So, they get like a block leader and then that person's going to focus on their block, volunteer, and they get a number of people on the block to get engaged and then they organize, decide they're going to do it. And then that also allows when the contractors come to get better deals, right? Because you get 15 people on your block, we're all going to get their house sealed and five of them are going to get new heat pumps or whatever it is. So, I think there's creative ways to think about it.
One of the challenges that we'll have with this is the city's procurement rules and how we'll be able to work or not work within them because we're very restricted as to, you know, we have to go out for competitive bid. In order to get a competitive bid, you have to say what it is you're offering. So, it's, it will be a different animal and at times it has been difficult for us to pursue certain programs because they're novel, there's only one vendor out there doing them, maybe it's just they've packaged it a new way. So, I can imagine, depending on what role that person plays in terms of advocating for this, we'll end up into, in some procurement problems that we just, that our rules will just not enable us to, like bundling would be very challenging for the city to take a role in that.
Right. But the city, the city wouldn't have to do it per se, right? So, you could, you could engage in working with residents to do it in a cooperative effort. You know, this hasn't worked out, but a lot of residents have come together around this idea of doing a solar cooperative where people would invest money into buying, buying solar panels for another building. It gets a better deal in terms of electricity for that building. The individuals aren't getting electricity. It hasn't worked out because leasing and solar has taken off, but there's probably other opportunities like that. And the city can sort of, the person could be an organizer really, helping bring people together. The city doesn't have to put the bid out itself per se.
Councilmember Robinson?
Who did the conference that was in this room a couple of years ago? Who organized that conference?
An intern with the planning office.
It was quite popular at the time. It didn't get repeated and it always seemed like a shame that that would be the kind of thing that we could promote. Darrell, you're probably familiar, I keep talking about Babylon, New York. You're probably familiar with the Babylon model, are you?
Not particularly, no.
I brought back the idea from Ickley where it was presented a couple of years back. And they redefined wasted energy as, as solid waste in the city of Babylon. So, and having done that, they could then use city resources to control wasted energy as, as if it were solid waste. It got them through a lot of, a lot of little problems there. And as, because they could do that, they could put together a loan program that, and the loans would stay with, as a lien on the property would stay beyond the sale of the house. And because they could do that, the payments on, to pay back those, those loans were very low. It weren't a burden and could easily be paid back through savings in the energy use itself. And, and because of all that, it didn't cost the city anything because it was loans with a, with a low interest rate. It was an interest rate and it brought actual income to the city. So, they were, they used municipal powers, in this case, the power to control waste as a, as a strategy to encourage single-family homeowners to, to encumber themselves a little bit. I've always thought that was a good idea. And as I think through that idea, I think of the other powers that we have. I mean, we have service delivery and that's, and we were talking about rec. I don't quite see, I don't know, maybe, maybe there's a way to, to provide services in that, in some way like that. There's police. I don't think we're going to go around finding people for not improving their energy savings. There's land use. Of course, the next council will be talking all about zoning. I'm sure they'll figure out a way to incorporate the Sustainability Coordinator. And then there are other things that I, I can't say I completely understand, although waste is, is one of them and that's kind of in your bailiwick. So, I like the bundling idea and the mass idea, mass appeals idea in some way if it's, if it really brings people together. And then I mentioned the conference. Those are my other thoughts.
Are there other things that you need?
Yeah, just a couple of the points that I don't have, I guess, I, a couple of you have mentioned sort of short, medium, long-term plans and kind of going through the Task Force Report and City Staff's Report. It's been a while since I've looked at it, but I thought it was broken out into short, long, and, I mean, I thought it was, that was already done. So, is there something more you wanted to see there than what was already identified? I mean.
Those were identified as, they were given the adjective, short-term, medium-term, long-term. What was not done was to put that into a plan so that you, you wouldn't want to have all of your short-term things done in the first year. You would want to space those out. You would want to start some of the long-term things in the first year, but you wouldn't necessarily start all of your long-term things in the first year. You'd want to space those out too because of the way resources work in the city. So, designing a whole timeline with those on them was what I had in mind for, I, I would call it an, an action plan for this. It's a, it's a fairly standard kind of thing to do, you know, in, in areas like this.
Okay. And the other thing I've heard a lot of conversations about has been fairly well-focused on energy. There were other different items in the TFVA report. I mean, I guess one of my concerns is this is one person or one firm we're talking about bringing on and, and just to do a couple of the things that have been mentioned here tonight in a little more specifics would take the full amount of time a person would have over the course of, of a year to say, community organizing, identify, you know, best resources that could be most well-used in the community, working with neighborhood groups to identify what seems to be what people are interested in. And that would leave out any of the solid waste stuff, any of the streetlight, you know, municipal energy authority type stuff, a lot of the others. So, I thought what we were trying to get at is, what would you like to see a year from now in terms of the whole panoply of options? Where do you think the priority needs to be given that they won't be able to do? But just start on what's, what's been presented in the TFVA report.
Can I take a quick shot? Which is, that's why you have the plan. That's why you have an action plan. Because the action plan is the overall guiding strategic document that helps you partial out how much time you're going to devote to community outreach, how much time you're going to be devoting to organizing co-ops versus how much time you're going to spend, I'm making this up, looking into more efficient street paving equipment or more efficient heating and cooling. And that's why, that's why you need the, the plan first because then that'll help you go through and set priorities, help you go through and pick among them. It'll give us an idea of what stuff would cost, how long things will take, the resources that are needed. It's not just cost. Sometimes it's a lot of staff work, as you were just indicating, and sometimes it's just money. Some of these things will have, will require heavy, you know, input from residents and businesses and others won't. And obviously, you'd want to mix and match those when, when we went forward. But I, I think in the first year, that's the. But I think in the first year, that's the advantage of having a plan and then bringing it to the council and having the council bless it in some sense, because we'll have to approve the, either the use of new resources or the shifting of existing resources.
And let me just say as a quick follow-up before I go to the city manager for a question or comment, that I think inherent in what you were just saying is the assumption, and I just want to double-check here, that that's a valid assumption that, and it's one which I share, that the council, even though this is an appropriation in the current year budget, the council assumes that there's going to be follow-on in other budgets, it's not just going to be this, and that takes care of it. There's the assumption that there's going to be an ongoing need and ongoing funding in budgets. Anybody disagree with that?
I have a question. You know, I think one of the things the coordinator could do is, is provide options to the council for exactly that. If it turns out that a lot can be accomplished, you know, in ways that don't use a lot of city resources, that would be one direction. On the other hand, it may be that they come back with, the person comes back with some really cool things that are going to require, like the hiring of something, or, you know, shifting of resources in the city from one function or activity to another. So I think it's a little premature to say, or for me, anyway, it feels premature to say, yes, well, you know, it'll have budget implications, or no, it won't, and what will they be?
It just sounded like, among the discussions so far, it sounded like this would carry over into another budget year, especially since whatever's happening isn't going to happen until mid-year of the current budget year, that there would necessarily be a sense that things are going to carry over for a certain period of time.
I, I think all of us, well, I don't know. I remember the discussion as, this was kind of a way to get started quickly.
Yes.
And not, you know, drag it out too long. It's a way to hit the ground running, if you will.
And it was going to be a contractor rather than an in-house employee, because we wanted to get a sense of things and weren't quite sure we were going, and didn't want to make that commitment to bringing somebody in-house, and then feeling like you've got to continue with it. But all I'm saying is, it sounds to me like we're thinking long enough term that it, that we're not just talking this one single infusion of money and that that's going to take care of it.
That's certainly what I, that's certainly what I heard when we had the discussion before, and the, and the person in the beginning, or, well, yeah, the person in the beginning isn't necessarily where the city's going to go in later years. You know, we may decide that all we need is, you know, to hire one other person for the city going forward, or we may decide we need more, but we.
Yeah, we don't know.
We don't know yet.
City manager has a question or comment?
I'm trying to remember what it was. No, I would just say, I, Darryl and I've had this discussion, I'm supportive of Councilwoman Snapper's idea about a plan. What I've kind of heard from the council just in the various discussions is you want to try, I think to use Councilwoman Wright's phrase, it's most bang for the buck. And I think part of that is sort of assessing a lot of what we do, which most of that's in Darryl's department, and try to identify where the gaps are. You know, what are we doing now? It's sort of best practice, where are the gaps? I think the decision point, I think, will be after that plan, and depending on what comes out of that, we may not just be talking about hiring a single contractor, depending on where the council wants to go. There may be different skill sets that are needed. So, I mean, my suggestion would be to move forward with trying to get someone to put together a plan, and I think the specific part that I think hasn't come up in some of the other discussions is what are the resources that are needed, and what is the tolerance of the council to do some of those items? $150,000 seems like a lot of money, but depending on what you want to do, it may not be. And so I think some of that is just getting different options that have different resource requirements, and then getting some direction from the council which way you want to go. And that may mean we continue with the person who does the plan, it may mean that we need an entirely different skill set. I would think a plan could be, you know, we have a lot of base information to give somebody, so I would hope that if, if there's agreement with the council with going forward with the development of an action plan, we should, can probably move forward with the development of an RFP for that, I would think, fairly quickly. Would you agree, Darryl?
Uh-huh.
And I would hope the development of a plan could be done fairly quickly.
Councilmember Wright and then Councilmember Schultz.
So I wanted to go back first to the previous discussion, which is, I totally think that there's some level of ongoing commitment, right? Like, obviously, we can't, I'm not going to be on the council, others won't, like, it'll be a council decision, but my assumption was that this was the beginning, and that some years you might decide to do less than 150, you might decide to do more, but the idea was that this was an ongoing effort. And if it's not an ongoing effort, we shouldn't spend $150,000 to begin with, right? Like, it's, that's just going to be a drop in the bucket, some great things will come out of it, but if we're just going to do for a year, you know, we're going to blink and then the year's going to be over. You know, there's already a number of months gone. Which I think goes to the second point, is we now have $150,000 to spend, not over 12 months, but over nine months now, basically, right? And so how do we deploy that in the best way? And I think, to me, there's kind of two things. One is this hiring someone pretty quickly to do the action plan, thinking about how much that might cost, kind of broadly, get a, you know, a rough sense of it. But then also, you guys are smart, you can look at kind of what was put together, is there any other bundle of area where, even if we had that plan together, we might want to invest with a consultant around some area? I don't know if it's in the solid waste disposal, or if it's in, because there's a number of things wrapped into the solid waste area, right? Or whether it's in streetlights, where we know that there's going to be a specific skill set we're going to need, and there's potentially high value, they're just kind of looking at it, you know, ballparking it. So those are, and maybe you guys come back and they note, we don't think there is something there, we should just do the plan to start.
Councilmember Schultz.
I'm puzzled. I felt like when we finished with reviewing the TFEA report, for which the primary recommendation was the hiring of a sustainability coordinator, that there, the committee, the task force idea was that we were going to be, at some point, bringing on a permanent employee who would deal with the issue of environmental sustainability, which suggests to me, the word sustainability is certain permanence. Now, I know there's been honest debate as to whether or not we should start by hiring a consultant to put, to get things kind of organized and, you know, do an inventory and assessment and come up with a plan. But, you know, there's different ways of thinking about that, and I've heard different people, you know, approach me on the subject. One, you hire, you hire the consultant, they put together the plan, they, they finish their contract, they disappear, you go out and you find somebody to bring on to the, onto the staff, it becomes a regular employee of the state, of the city, to implement it, and they said, well, this, you know, after going out and dealing with the community and finally, you know, really understanding what's going on, this isn't really a, isn't going to work, and here's why. I mean, or would it be better to bring that person on at the beginning, the person that you feel is capable of putting together a plan, who is capable of meeting with the community at all its various levels of, of being informed or uninformed about the subject, and have that person stand behind the plan, explain it to the city council, the city council adopts the plan, and then we know that this is the person that we, is going to be the one that's accountable to carry it out. I'm not saying we ought to do it one way or the other, I'm just saying I'm puzzled as I started, because there's more than one way of skinning this pussy gap. And the other comment I wanted to make is that implicit in everything that's been talked about here, when we talk about environmental, we're not talking about the natural environment here. We're talking about energy savings, carbon footprints, reducing emissions, saving, figuring out how to save money and reduce our energy. Energy is an aspect of the environment, but there's a lot of other things that, when you talk about the sustainability of the environment, depending on who's listening to you on the other end of the telephone line are going to attribute, oh, well, you're really talking about air pollution, you're talking about water pollution, you're talking about the birds and the bees and the animals and all that kind of thing. I mean, it's, it's a big thing, and I think we ought to be clear amongst ourselves where the, what the parameters are when we're talking about environmental sustainability.
It seemed to me we were clear that we wanted to go the contractor route to begin with, and where we go from there, I don't think anybody has got any clue at this point about where this will lead, whether it's in-house or what it'll be. What else do you need? You have what you need to write the RFP?
What I would suggest is that we try to put something together and circulate that back through the council, just to make sure we, you know, capture what your interest is.
Okay. Thanks. Your turn.